All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Ryenbeck, Town of Ryenbeck zoning board of appeals meeting for June 15th, 2022. The first order of business is to review the minutes from the last meeting on April 20th, 2022. I reviewed them. I did not see any mistakes or typos or whatever. I didn't have any corrections concerns, whatever, but how about the rest of the game?
They were the main minutes.
Huh?
The main minutes.
Oh, the main minutes. Okay. How about the main minutes?
They were fine.
They were fine? Everybody good?
Yeah, I looked at the updated after 10:00.
Okay. Richard, any questions, concerns in the main minutes?
They were good.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes for May. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Passed. All right. Sorry about that. So we have one piece of new business, and that is case number 1028, which is Rugies. And I know Mark, you're here for that, so...
I'm Mark. Seth Spickel here. Seth will present.
Okay. You guys have done this before, so we know what to do. So get up and please present what the application is about. If I have some questions and we feel that it's all there, we'll accept it and set a public hearing date. So, take your time.
Good evening. Seth Spickel, representing Rugies 9G Properties LLC. I'll work with Mark Kermitzky, DLSPC, here this evening to present our application for a sign permit in which we are asking for some area variance. First order of business, I'd just like to ask the chair and the planning board members. We met earlier this month with the planning boards, and we received some feedback from them on this application package as well as some planner comments. Based on those planner comments, we have made small revisions to our package. I have that to submit to Gretchen this evening. I do not, you know, know if you guys would like to have that new stuff now, if you prefer to do that. That's okay. We don't like to bombard you with new things at the meeting. The changes are in regards to a known equation. We identified that one of the signs has a pylon sign. That is an incorrect determination. It is a freestanding monument sign. So we wanted to very much correct the language to match the zoning code sections. Additionally, in looking at specific ways that we calculated the areas of some of these things, we needed to make slight adjustments to those numbers for those. So that are the changes that have been made. Those are reflected in both our application for the sign, our area variance application, as well as the plans, and I have those set.
Okay.
These are 11 by 17s. I provided two full-size copies for Gretchen and Kim. Would you have one more?
Uh, yeah, if I can, yeah.
If you have a question.
Alright, thank you.
And then I will submit these. Thank you so much. I know we're gonna start with lots of handouts here, but this next packet that I have is, I think, going to be pretty helpful in walking through this process. And I will describe it in just one moment. Its content. As we can see, the first section is literally just the sign regulations. I thought it might be important to reference this evening. In the sign regulations, you'll see sections that are highlighted that are specific to either the area variance or parts of our discussion here. So those highlighted sections you'll note later on. Also included, it's just the definitions, because we do get into this. There's some specific ways that signs are called or definitions. Just wanted you to have that for reference as well. Finally, the last page is a summary of the variances that we're requesting. It does get a little complex, so just wanted to make sure that everybody is very aware we're all on the same page and you can have a full discussion about this.
Could you also provide a reference copy of that so that I can have it?
Would you like multiple or just one?
Just wanted to thank the client. Thank you.
As I mentioned, here for Rugies this evening, and can we just kind of walk through the presentation that you've prepared? It is slightly different, but takes most material from the package that you have. Next slide, please.
Do you want to reveal your question?
So we've been living this project for the last four years or so. I don't believe that this board has had that same experience with this, so we wanted to just provide a little bit of background. We're starting with the town board. Several years ago, Rugies had approached the town board to develop a rezoning of this specific site located at 3817 Route 9G, which is the old stamp facility. It's a, you know, 130-plus acre site that they had rezoned to the ORP district. It's section 12568ZZ, which is service of vehicles. That's the specific use that was written into the code. So that allowed Rugies to move forward with the purchase of the property and coach the town planning board for what we then, last year, with a resolution in, just at the end of last year, approached the town planning board for a phased development. The phased development, what we're here to discuss tonight is Phase 1 sign application. Phase 1 is the existing building and the existing drive. There is a Phase 2, which is then conceptually approved by the planning board, as well as potentially a Phase 3 with the remaining lands. Here's Phase 2. However, those details will require specific application to the planning board again, so we are only focused on Phase 2 today. You know, Phase 1 is relocation of Rugies Subaru from here in the village to this site to reuse this building for repair and service of vehicles. That was approved on, you know, October 2021. Phase 2 interior just noted here for your information. They may also in the future for Phase 2 relocate the Ford and the Chrysler operations to this site in another building mass to be decided in the future. Phase 3 would just be what happens to the balance of the property based on the ORP zoning regulation. So, next slide, please. This is just helpful in defining exactly what's happening for Phase 1. So you have a large site, but the mass of all of the work that we're doing is right, is located in just this small area here. Redevelopment of the existing building, redevelopment of the parking areas around it, and a slight change to the entrance. That's a requirement of the New York State DOT. The little site distance improvement and just reconfiguration of what is now a Y with an island to a single entrance. Next slide, please. So that brings us to tonight's application, which is for sign and variance, area variances for those signs. Just want to note that the existing site signage totals 241.39 square feet.
Did you put it under him?
Yeah, existing.
The existing signage is 241.39 feet, and that is also listed on a table on sheet 2 of your plan set. That is all quantified. Every individual sign is quantified. The proposed signage is 193.46 square feet. So overall, we're showing a reduction. So I thought it was important to show you, or at least discuss quickly, the inventory of existing signs. So there are two billboard signs located on Route 9G, first stamp. One on the north end of the property, one on the south end. There is one freestanding monument sign located on 9G at the entrance in the right-of-way, outside of the property boundary. So you have three signs that exist along Route 9G right now. The remainder of the site, because it's a unique site, is almost not visible from Route 9G or any other place. As part of the rezoning, it's also required to maintain a 200-foot buffer, natural buffer along any of the roadways. That's 9G and Middle Road, as well as buffers along the backside of the property, the east and south, which are wetlands and wetland-adjacent areas. So you have almost 100% screening around the site. So the site, the existing signs on the site, there is one wall sign located on the building itself, and there are various directional signs. So all the existing signs are proposed to be removed. What we are proposing is one freestanding monument sign located adjacent to the entrance, four wall signs, and various directional signs. So, next slide, please. So we're gonna start with what's going to be visible from Route 9G. There's only one sign proposed that will be visible from Route 9G, and that is our freestanding monument sign. The freestanding monument sign is a masonry base, so you have a cap with, you know, a stone or brick base, and then a metal sign with four plates, tiles. Those four tiles, the sign is proposed to be double-sided. There's four tiles on each side. Right now, because we're only doing Phase 1, the only two signs that will be showing up during this phase will be the Rugies sign and the Subaru sign. Once we have approved and gone forward with Phase 2 and potentially a Phase 3, these additional sign areas will be utilized. However, we need to permit everything if we're going to put it up, so we wanted to just make you aware of those empty tiles, which will be coming in the future. So we're requesting a freestanding sign that's 84 square feet. The lettering areas as a requirement can only be 60% of the face of the sign. So these are seven feet by one and a half feet, the tiles, and 60% of them will be the letter. So we will comply with that. The full square footage, obviously, is 84 square feet.
Is it 84 on one side or total?
That's 84 on both sides. That's total square footage on the side. So one other element of this, specific to this, the code section that references freestanding monument signs, is the location. The location of the monument sign that we're proposing is, there's an existing sign right here. So if you can see, we're kind of redoing the entrance. That existing sign would be in the drive aisle, so it needs to be moved. It is also like nine, greater than nine feet off of the property boundary into the right-of-way. So we're proposing the sign location on the north side of the entrance, approximately one foot from the property boundary and perpendicular so that it can be viewed from both directions. So our variance request for this is based on section 12537K2A, and it's a freestanding sign that's not to exceed 12 square feet. Obviously, we were requesting 84 square feet. The other portion of the code section for signage is 12537K3. Freestanding sign shall not exceed six feet in height nor be closer than 20 feet to the property boundary. As I just described, the existing sign is outside of the property boundary. We're proposing one feet. And then this total sign height from the base to the top is nine feet 10 inches. So there are multiple variance requests for the freestanding sign. Next slide, please. So just wanted to give you an idea of what's existing on the site. The existing freestanding monument sign is also double-sided. As I mentioned, it's in the right-of-way, outside of the property boundary. It is greater than six feet in height, closer to 10. The two billboards, the one on the north is almost adjacent to the IXL entrance over here. That's 70 square feet is one of the billboard signs. And then the one on the south, which is much further to the south of the property, almost right at the edge of the property boundary, more adjacent to Ford, is another 70-square-foot billboard sign. As I mentioned, all these signs will be removed, but I think it's just important to see what is changing. Next slide, please. So now we're into the site, which is almost not visible from Route 9G. At different times of the year, seasonally, you do get some views into the site. However, those views are mostly on this direction. So as you're going north on 9G, you see a little bit of the south facade. The way that the sign code is structured, they, it talks about principal facade. So our principal facade for this building will be the entrance where people come in. Most customers come in our entrance drive, go directly into the building. They drive through the building. Someone picks their vehicle up, and only Rugies employees use the remainder of the site. Once the vehicle is done, it's actually returned to them on this drive, which is an outdrive, and they leave the site. This area is just for, you know, customers that would come in one part that aren't getting serviced. So for the most part, the only face that customers see is this area, and that's that principal facade. That principal facade is 72 linear feet. That's important when we get into calculating the sign variances. So the wall sign details, we're requesting four signs. The Rugies sign, indicating their identity sign, a Subaru sign, indicating the Subaru identity. A unique part about the Subaru sign is anytime you place the word Subaru on a sign or sign, it's a requirement of Subaru that the emblem be located next to the name. So that's why you'll see the emblem next to the Subaru anywhere that's labeled. The other, and so that Rugies sign is obviously located here. The Subaru sign is located here. Over the two entrance drives where customers go in will be located an express sign, an express service sign, and a service sign. So those are the four signs that we're requesting. The Rugies identity sign is approximately 11 square feet. The Subaru identity sign is 25.51 square feet. The service area sign is 6.8 square feet, and the express service sign is 13.56. The total wall sign area is 56.96 square feet. As I mentioned, principal facade is 72 linear feet. So the variance request for wall signs, when you look at code section 12537K2A, not more than two primary signs should be permitted per establishment on the lot. As I mentioned, we have a freestanding monument sign, and now we have four wall signs. So we are requesting a variance for the number of signs located on the establishment lot. The wall sign, the next part is one identity wall sign located on the establishment's principal facade not to exceed one square foot per six linear feet. So on, as I said, 72 feet divided by six would allow a 12-square-foot wall sign. However, we're proposing a wall signage to a total area of 56.96 square feet. Lastly, the maximum total signage per establishment is not to exceed 30 square feet. As, you know, noted here, we have 56.96 in wall signage. We have 84 in freestanding sign. A total of 140.96 square feet of signage is being requested. So in each section of the signage code, there are almost multiple variances that need to be requested, if you break them down, because they refer to multiple types of signs. So, next slide, please. So just wanted to identify again, this principal facade is the south facade for this existing building. And this is their existing wall sign. It's 11 square feet. When we look at these, because they are projecting, they're not to be projecting more than nine inches. Ours are proposed at four inches, similar to this. That's how much it sticks off of the wall of the structure. You're just looking at lettering area when you look at one of these signs. Physical letter, how much is that area? So that's why we, you know, total this one. Again, this is to be removed. This is where actually the addition is going on. Next slide, please. So lastly, we wanted to quantify and discuss directional signage. There are a couple types of directional signage, and there's variances associated, the area variance associated with that. The directional signs, for the most part, their directional signage is, this directional signage we have is an interception directory sign, which is going to be located right here. When you look at the, how this site is laid out, we need to tell trucks and deliveries and things to go this direction. We need to tell the people to go this direction. So that is the intention of the directory sign, and that's six square feet. And that directory sign is item number two here, identifies as item number two, and it says, "Deliveries, vendors, and all other traffic, go left." You know, Subaru service customers, go right. And the parking, the next sign is the parking area sign. So once you get past this location and you've been told which way to go, we are identifying that Subaru customers who want to just park can pull into here, so we provided a sign that says Subaru customer parking. That sign is six square feet and located right here to identify that. The next sign is the service entrance sign. Just past that is a sign that will tell people not to go to the parking area, but to pull through and drive through the building. That sign is, you know, Subaru service, you know, take the right, essentially. And that sign is six square feet. Lastly, when any delivery or truck or anyone comes to this intersection, we want to make sure that people who are not aware, or even customers for that matter, know where to get out. So the last directional sign is an exit to Route 9 sign located right here, and that's 1.5 square feet. Additional directory signs are categorized as internal safety and mandatory government regulation signs. So we identify those as stop signs, ID number one. We have a stop sign located here. There's one at the entrance to 9G. And then internal to the site, we just use stop bars. We don't have stop signs associated with these. We just provide stop bars. There are do not enter signs. Because we do not want any customers going past this point, this is for Rugies people to take vehicles in and out. There's a truck lift in here, which needs access specifically for larger vehicles. So we have two do not enter signs here, clearly indicating that anyone who's coming for service needs to go this direction. The other do not enter signs are, there's a storage building up here. And we just want to make sure that no one, no trucks or any employees or anyone is going in this area, so we provided do not enter signs in this location. Lastly, the, kind of, one that is under the category for government regulation signs is the reserved parking for handicaps. We're providing six handicap spaces, four in the main parking area for customers and two in the rear for employees. All of those will have the typical, you know, reserved parking for handicap sign located at the end of the parking space as well as the handicap symbol in the parking space itself. The, just to note lastly, is just that we do have painted stop bars and directional arrows. We don't consider those signs, but we just wanted to note them anyway. As I mentioned, stop bars at certain intersections. And then we have, in going in, we have two lanes, and coming out, we have one. So we want to clearly identify those for customers. So just provided that information. So the total directional and safety signs are 52.5 square feet. The variance request for these signs is that 12537K2C, one sign at each point of access and for internal directional permitting, provided that the individual signs are no more than two square feet each. So we have clearly more than just two. We have one access point, so we would have one sign at the access point. We have 16 directional signs, as I've just described them, and safety signs. Those signs with IDs 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, that's all listed in this table, are greater than the two-square-foot allowances. So that is the variance request.
Is the six, the six foot six square foot, are they getting double-sided total?
They are, they are not double-sided. All of these directional signs are single-sided.
Okay.
The only double-sided sided sign proposed is the freestanding monument sign at the entrance. Next slide, please. So these are the existing safety and directional signs. At the same place, we're proposing an interception sign. You can see that over time, they had to add to make it clear where different people had to go. So it's important that at this intersection, we have some sort of direction sign. And as I noted, we're choosing in the ways we present. So we've got multiple sign types, various sizes, but it is at that same location. Elsewhere on-site, you have various types of directional signage, including some stop signs, including like at the entranceway, you know, a do not enter, private, you know, a road sign. You have no parking signs, some arrow directional, some building signs that indicate different things as well as just building numbers located on these. Again, all of these will be removed, but it's just, I wanted to show you that we are in keeping with kind of the site characteristics. Next slide, please. So included in the package that I handed out is the summary of these variances. So 12537K2A, there are four different portions. Each, almost each sentence of that section of the code requires variance for us. Not more than two primary signs on one establishment. We're asking for one freestanding and four wall. You know, freestanding signs not to exceed 12 square feet. We're asking for one freestanding sign, 84 square feet. One identifying wall sign located on the establishment's principal facade, you know, six, one square foot per six linear feet. We have 72 linear feet, six. We get 12 square feet of wall sign allowed. We're asking for four wall signs, total of 56.96. 12737K2A is, you know, maximum total signage per establishment not to exceed 30 square feet. We've quantified our maximum signage as 140.96. And that is freestanding wall signs. That does not include directional signage.
Does that part of the code for total signage include directional signs?
I don't believe so. I think the only requirement for directional signage is the size, not the number, or, I believe the requirement of the code is that we prove that they're necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Or demonstrate that they're necessary. So, and then 127, or 12537K2C would be the next code section that we're requesting an area variance. That's one sign at each point of access, internal directional signs, provided the signs are not more than two square feet, as we just went over. We're asking for the 16 directional signs and safety signs, and 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are greater than two square feet. All of those tables are included on your plan sets for reference in the future. Lastly, and one of the things that, when we had a termination letter from the zoning administrator, the, these two sections of the signage code were referenced. This last one was not referenced in the zoning administrator's letter. This came up in the planner's review letter and in our review further of the code. So 12537K3 is that a freestanding monument sign should not exceed six feet in height or be close to 20 feet to the property, as we discussed in the beginning, nine, nine feet 10 inches, and it's about less than one foot, 0.82 feet from the property. Next slide, I think that's it. And I do have in the PDF the marks of plans, if you had those, so that we could see them full-size. But at this time, that's the conclusion of our presentation. If anyone has any questions or we'd like to look at anything else.
Two questions. The monument sign on the front, how is it going to be illuminated?
It is proposed to be illuminated, you know, we'll have to get the specific details. The existing sign is lit from below with a shielded floodlight, and I would say that that would be your coach here, but I'm gonna want to verify that with the client because he may want to do a goose neck downward. So I will verify that and we'll come back with it.
So I'll get a check of it.
I'm not sure that's, I mean, that's allowed. And we reiterate that, but I think dells.
Yeah.
It has to be lit from...
There's gotta be a down-facing light.
Yeah.
So then the goose neck downward would be our alternative.
Right. Just had a concern there. And then the directional signs. I like, I like the illustrations you gave for the monument sign and for the, you know, the sign, the sign of the building, the wall signs. Do you have similar renderings for the directional signs?
We do not.
Okay. Would like to get that just to see if we're looking at it.
Did you see the lining that is required that is upward?
I thought, I thought it was required that it was upward, yeah. And I don't think the goose neck, I think it was the other way around, but I could be wrong.
Wait, so is it opposite?
I thought, they originally thought they wanted to have the goose lining, whatever you call it, coming down, but I think they were told that it had to go up. It had to be basically right. So whatever it is.
The shirts down. Anytime that it's been for plan.
Anytime that it's been for planning, it's a down light?
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be.
They don't want uplighting.
I'll verify.
We'll look for some guidance from you guys on that. I don't think the specific in code is there.
We're also in front of the planning board first.
Right, so they can, they can, I just wondered. But I would like to see what the directional signs look like.
And then rendering of the directional signs.
Directional signs. Yeah. That's the only thing I saw. But by the way, a nice, very thorough presentation as we've come to expect.
So the idea of moving the property and everything is to move maybe Subaru out of the village? That one?
That's one.
And then, and then also the Ford, eventually will the Ford building or whatever being done, or be there as well? So it's relatively hidden back in there, which is.
Well, it's service only, we can.
Oh, service only?
It's service only.
Oh, even with the Subaru?
Yes.
With everything?
With everything.
Oh, so it would still be a dealership for Subaru? So the rezoning effort, section 128, 125, 68 ZZ, the specific section for this type of use, which is automobile service, was, was very specific in its language that no sales appear on the site. So the sales fronts will remain in their locations. So you will have sales going on in the village for Subaru, sales going on at the 9G intersection for Chrysler, and just down the road on 9G, sales for Ford. It's the intention that all of the service, which tends to be the heavier traffic use, be moved to this site. So, so in the, in the village, you have the service building and then across the street, where Lou built that wonderful building for, for the selling of Subarus. So are you saying the service area could be closed eventually? Is that the plan? I do not know the specific intention for the use of that building. We are moving, it is planned to move lifts and all of the service equipment from that building to this new building. Whether they will utilize that for sales, I need to speak with my client too.
The idea for, for moving the service for all three dealerships was to leave the traffic, especially in the village, right? I mean, that, that was foremost in moving Subaru. So, you know, Chestnut Street gets, you know, gets a relief and the same kind of, was, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of service vehicles. So that was, that was the intent of the, and it was, you know, it was set in accordance with the rezoning consideration.
Thank you.
Going off of what Scott had asked for with the renderings for the directional signs, when you provide those, could you also kind of provide like reference number? Like, you know, you have like 1, 2, 3. Could you also provide those with the images just so that it's easier for us to be able to put together?
Yeah, and it'll reference the specific locations.
Right, where they're going to be, yeah.
Yep, it'll be all.
Yeah.
And that table that is on your sheet two does have those ID numbers. Those ID numbers are shown in their locations on the site plan. We'll just add those ID numbers to the rendering.
Yes, that would be, that would be helpful.
I'd also like to note with regard to the monument sign, you know, the location of it, you know, the request would be less than 20 feet. It's, it's for, you know, geographic and clearing reasons, right? Because there's, there's a hill right there. And so if you were going to move it back 20 feet, it would require regrading and removal of quite a bit of vegetation along there in order to have adequate site plan above north and south from there. So the idea was to keep it within Ruby's property. The minute you go into the DOT right away, you're required to have a license with DOT, that's signage there. So that was, that's, that was the goal. To put it in a location that where it's visible with minimal site disturbance.
That's, that's a very important consideration, I think. So maybe you can just, if it's not already in the materials, just to say why you're putting it where it is, what the benefit of doing it is.
Okay, yep.
It's a compelling argument.
And it's also in the, the specific code of, you know, section 125, 68 ZZ for this type of use, it's the 200-foot natural buffer that is mandated to be maintained. So it's in keeping with that as well.
And can I ask, so would you provide that information about, you know, the reason why it's located where it is? So in the materials that you provided to the ZBA for the area variances, there were some additional ones that we just discussed this evening that weren't included or weren't, you know, expanded upon. Could you just provide an amended application that just fully lists each applicant, each variance that you're requesting?
It's included in the package.
A new, a new application?
I, I redid the application, the variance application and the sign application to remove any language that referenced a pylon sign, as well as adjust all of the variance requests and areas. And I added those in.
Okay.
And we'll also include the amendments that we're talking about.
Okay, and the new sign permit application also says that it's illuminated? Because I think the original one said non-illuminated.
The, we're talking about the freestanding monument sign?
Yes.
We'll have to, we'll have to detail that as well.
Okay.
You can see as we got into it, there was quite a few details associated.
Yes.
It seems like it's harder than it should be.
A simple, a simple solution, but then, I, yeah, that's the thing is that when I was going through the sign regulation code, there's, there's a lot of details. So that's why I started noticing a few things and I talked with Michael. I think Michael's up to use. And then if this isn't too much trouble, I just think it would be helpful to visualize. But if you could kind of like, I know you had your proposed on one side and the existing on another side. You could kind of combine those just so that we can kind of have just real side by side.
Sure.
I think it's just, it's always helpful for the board. And helpful for me also just to do, just to kind of see, you know, what's there, what's coming, how they look different, how they include it.
Certainly we'll create another sheet, full size, with half of the site. That side will extract that right after the session.
And that will also be a compelling argument, especially given what exists there right now.
Okay. Exactly.
All right. Any other questions or concerns or requests for additional information from the, from the gentleman?
No, I mean, I think it's very comprehensive and would be additional, but we're not.
All right, then at this time I'd make a motion that we accept the application subject to receiving the additional information. Do.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstaining? All right, so we've, we've accepted it and we just need the additional information. And we'll put it down for a public hearing, Gretchen?
July 20th.
July 20th? And I assume you guys can be here?
Yes.
All right, great. And the sooner we get that additional information, obviously it's better for us. But a very, another, a nice application, thank you. And thank you for the information.
Take your time.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You too. All right, as far as some housekeeping. Kim, I think you've indicated in my cheat sheet here that the planning board has already taken up the secret issue and so we'll defer to the planning board on that.
And it said type 2, I didn't read that.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but we will defer to their finding on that. And then it looks like referrals to, obviously to the planning board and then to the WAC.
Yeah, I believe, I haven't, I'm a little positive it's in the LWORP. And for some reason it's not, I'll correct you though, but.
I'll send it anyway.
Yeah.
It's in a container, so that, so that's good.
And if you want to discuss who, it's just long to drag.
Yeah, I was, like I said, I was going to, I'm going to suggest to him economically because he's done so many signs, but since he's not here, it seems kind of unfair to, to do that. So do I have any takers?
This would be very difficult for me to do.
All right, I'll do it.
You can always discuss it with Tim.
Well, that's true, I suppose, yeah.
And then, you know, like this is, this is more of an informality just to prepare. But, you know, let Tim review.
Well, you know, we'll put down me and Tim. And I'll suggest to him that as a form of penance for not attending this evening, he can take that over, how's that? All right. Okay, so that's a little piece of new business. The, and what I was talking to Gretchen about is I, I don't see Wendy here on the Tataconda application. We're supposed to have a public hearing.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I actually have emails from her, what to do with the agenda.
Well.
I mean, I know.
So the purpose of the public hearing really is to let the public have a discussion on it. The application was already presented twice, really. But, you know, you don't necessarily need a revised presentation. It's typical that we have it when the applicant is here. But, you know, the public hearing was noticed. So I would suggest that the board continue with the public hearing. I can provide a brief discussion of it if you would like for the record.
Yeah, I think for the record, that's probably a good thing. I mean, I, I really don't want to delay this. And, you know, obviously the reason for that is this, is that, you know, the requested variance should have been on the first application. It was our mistake that it was not. The resolution is.
Yeah, well, it wasn't discovered until it was at the planning board. But, so they, the applicant has come before us a few months ago and they had wanted to provide a few accessory structures. They wanted to have a proposed detached garage. They had an existing utility pad that they were going to cover it with a utility shed. And then they were also going to have a poolhouse, which was also going to serve as a guest house. So they had required a few variances. One was the total square footage for the aggregate of all the accessory structures together exceeded the maximum allowable in that district. And the shed, which is right here, was closer to the fronting street. If the, the way the property works, another fronting street is actually open this way. So this garage is not in the front yard, but the shed was. So that was another variance that they required. So at the May meeting, May? Uh, no, April, right?
It was the April meeting.
April meeting, the ZBA had granted those two variances requested. And then it was determined subsequent to that, that the poolhouse, because it's an accessory dwelling unit, the maximum allowable in the RC5 is 900 square feet of habitable space. The proposed poolhouse guest house is 18, 1,015 square feet. So they required 915 square feet. And that's what they're in here for. So the project itself hasn't changed. It's just an additional variance. Should have been requested at the beginning and so they're just requesting it now.
And, and they did submit a new application for that?
Yes, a new application was provided just for that particular variance. And I did verify, you know, because we had granted variances for the accessory structure. Generally, I did want to just make sure that a new variance was required as opposed to one that could just be lumped in. But it deals with two different sections of the code. One is for accessory dwelling units in particular, which is what they're in front of us.
All right, and so anyway, we accepted the application and tonight is the public hearing. And I don't believe that we've received any information from any member of the public with regard to this application. Is that correct, Gretchen?
Okay. So Scott, I would just open the public hearing formally.
All right, so at this time I'd open the public hearing. And is there anybody in the audience?
There is, is there a second?
Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So there's, I will, there's nobody in the audience here?
And no, and no comments received.
And no comments received from anybody in the, in the public? I will note that we did get a response from the zoning board, or assuming the planning board.
Planning board, yeah.
It was six?
Yeah, at their, at their last meeting.
And then that, was it the WAC? I think they.
Yes, CAG responded that they had no comment.
So any discussion or questions here about this application? Nope. I mean, it's really just cleaning up what should have been done in the first place.
Well, it's a, it's a new variance that they do need. I wouldn't say accessory cleaning up, but it was something that they required in order.
Right, and through no fault of their own. I just want to make that clear that, you know, they, they were told to apply for those two and they did. They were granted and then they were told they needed another. Done everything they were supposed to. So do you feel comfortable? I mean, I feel comfortable closing the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
A second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. So discussion, I think it's clear that, I mean, nothing about this project has changed. And I'm still in favor of it. And I think it's just pro forma that we grant, you know, the additional variances that, you know, that should have been in front of us the first time around.
Yeah, so typically as, as the board knows, we would close the public hearing and then at the next meet, you know, we have 52 days to close the public hearing to issue a resolution. Resolution is typically prepared at the next meeting. Because this had, the, the project itself had recently been before the board, the board had already been familiar with the project and it was very, very recently. It was discussed that we would have a resolution prepared for tonight, subject to any comments received. So would you like to go through the resolution that was prepared?
I would love to go through the resolution and I would also like to thank you publicly for cleaning it up for me.
Which doesn't mean much.
Yeah. It's subject to debate, but anyway. All right, so I think everybody has a hard copy of the resolution in front of them and I'll just read through it. This is the resolution of the Town of Rybek's zoning board appeals in the matter of the area variance, not variances. Application of Rebecca and Mande Tataconda. Case number 1026A. And the original resolution is 1026. Background, the applicant's owners are the Tatacondas. They are represented by Wendy Whisperin, architect. Property involved, the appeal involves property located at 310 Enterprise Road, Rybek, New York. And varies the tax parcel number 637-0-00-547165. The applicant's property is approximately 38.79 acres and is located in the RC5 zoning district. Paragraph three, description of the proposed project. The applicants wish to construct a new poolhouse, new detached garage, and add a roof to an existing utility pad to enclose it. The structures are depicted in site plans which have been submitted to the board. The applicants were previously before this board for area variances because the proposed utility shed will be closer to the fronting street than the existing house. And the total area of the proposed existing accessory structures will be 4,660 square feet, which is in excess of the 1,500 square feet permitted. Both these area variances were granted on April 20th, 2022. Unfortunately, after the two variances were granted, it was determined that a third area variance was required for the size of the poolhouse slash guest house. Accordingly, on May 2nd, the applicant supplied for an additional area variance pursuant to 125, 68E4, which permits, or which limits the habitable square footage of accessory dwelling units in the RC5 zoning district to 900 square feet. The following variance is now requested. Area variance one, Town of Rybek's. Area variance 1, Town of Ryenbeck zoning law, section 125-68E4, limits the square footage of accessory dwelling units in the RC5 zoning district to 900 square feet of habitable space. The proposed pool house/guest house is proposed to have a habitable area of 1,815 square feet, thus necessitating an area variance of 915 square feet. ZBA review of timeliness, timeliness of appeal. The applicants filed an appeal with the board on May 2, 2022, and have paid the right of sufficiency. The appeal was filed within 60 days and the date of the ZEO's determination letter, which was April 27, 2022. And thus, the application is timely pursuant to 125-125B of the Town of Ryenbeck zoning law. The application was accepted by the board on May 18, 2022, and indeed is complete. Secret, the application is currently in front of the planning board for site plan and is specially permitted. The planning board has determined that this project is a type 2 action. The ZBA agrees with this classification and accepts the determination. No further review is required. Referrals and responses, the application was referred to the Town of Ryenbeck planning board. Following the ZBA's acceptance of the application is complete. The Town of Ryenbeck planning board responded on June 6, 2022, stating that they saw no significant planning or environmental concerns. The application was also referred to the Conservation Advisory Board slash Waterfront Advisory Committee, CAB/WAC. And on June 14, 2022, the CAB/WAC stated that they had not reviewed the application and offered no comment. Seven, a public hearing, a public hearing on this application was duly advertised and held at the town hall on June 15, 2022. The public was afforded the opportunity to review and participate during the public hearing. There were no comments received from the public on this application. Accordingly, the public hearing was closed on June 15, 2022. Site visit. Previously, on April 2, 2022, all board members, Scott Bergen, Catherine Lark, Tim Allenbrook, Tim Ekinoply, and Richard. Kopischansky. One of these days I'll get your name, Richard. Visited the applicant's property and surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, settings, surrounding environment, and the character of the neighborhood. As the project has not changed from the initial application, no additional site visit was made. For more information and detailed details of the site visit that occurred on April 2, 2022 in reference to this project, please see ZBA resolution or case number 1026 filed on April 21, 2022. Findings of fact and conclusions of law, balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicants if the area variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We have determined that the variance requested should be granted because there is no perceived detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of variance. Ten, consideration of five factors and balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors as required by 125-124C1 of the Town of Ryenbeck zoning law as follows. A, if the variance is granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to the nearby properties? We find that the answer to the question is no. As previously indicated in ZBA resolution, case number 1026, the structures, including the pool house/guest house, will be shielded from any neighbors and the public by the topography and existing vegetation. The property is more than 38 acres in area and the placement of the pool house makes sense given the existing structures and topography. B, I'm going to get a move that B in a little closer if I can. Can the benefits sought by the applicants be achieved by some other method feasible to the applicant pursue other than the area variance? We find that the answer to this question is no, see prior ZBA resolution, case number 1026. The pool house/guest house is next to the pool, there's an existing pool, which is, which is a reasonable location. I don't know, do I want to put it as an existing pool?
Yes.
Just to, which is a reasonable location. It is also a reasonable accessory structure to have for a residential property. Given the size of the property and the principal dwelling, it is not unreasonable to allow this accessory structure on the premises. Is the requested area variance substantial? We find that the answer to the question is yes. The pool house/guest house is twice the permissible size allowed in the zoning district. However, while the variance requested is numerically substantial, this is mitigated due to the size of the parcel as well as the topography of the parcel. As previously indicated, the parcel is over 38 acres in size. The proposed structure, structures will cover less than 1% of the property, which is significantly less than the maximum covered which is permitted in the zoning district. Therefore, the proposed pool house/guest house, when compared to the size of the lot, will not be substantial and will fit and harmonize with the existing structures proposed for a residential home. The requested variance is only for 915 square feet on the 38 acre parcel. Given the size of the property and other structures, this is insignificant. Will the proposed variances, will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find that the answer to this question is no. Given the topography and the size of the property, as well as the fact that the proposed structure, as set forth in the site plan, is appealing, the structures will only appear, will only improve the appearance of the applicant's property.
Make that singular?
I think we make that singular because that's what we're really talking about. We're just talking about the pool house, so. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to the question is yes. The pool house/guest house could be constructed on a smaller footprint. Minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors and balancing test, we must determine if this requested variance is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant. We find that the answer to this question is yes. The size of the proposed structure is reasonable given the size of the parcel as well as the topography. Now therefore be resolved based upon all of the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section 1, the ZBA hereby grants the variance from section 125-68E4, allowing the proposed pool slash accessory dwelling to have 1,815 square feet of habitable space. The ZBA finds that the granting of the variance to the applicants outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community by such grant. Make that singular. Is that one? One second. Yeah. Section 2, the granting of the variance is expressly contingent upon the construction being in conformity with the plans presented to the board. Section 3, the granting of the variance shall be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryenbeck for any and all fees and escrow deposits to a connection with this application and in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of the Town of Ryenbeck zoning law. The granting of the vari, again, variances, not variances, shall be deemed valid, shall not be deemed valid until all such fees are paid before by the applicant. For the granting of this, you know, variance, see, this is what happened to be plagiarized from a prior resolution. The granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and approvals and fund five. The area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of the resolution. Any comments, concerns, questions?
I just had one additional edit that I would like to propose.
Okay.
Under the area variance factor test, number C for variance is substantial, the second to last sentence says the requested variance is only for 915 square feet. I would say for an additional 915 square feet, just so it's not confused that it's the variance, yes.
All right.
I think it looks great with the edit test and stuff. Any other questions?
Okay, anybody else? All right, this was an easy one. And thank you again, Kim, for cleaning it up for me.
Sure.
All right. Since I think our discussion is complete, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as read with the changes that we've made all the way. Do I have a second? Second? All right. Gretchen?
All right. Tim A.
A.
Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Catherine?
Here.
All right, passed. Okay, that is it for the public hearing. And I guess that would have been old business or whatever. We actually don't have any old business. Anything else we need to discuss? Kim, is there anything?
I don't think so. I guess the only thing I would say is, so we're meeting in person today because the executive order which had permitted virtual meetings to happen had expired on June 8, I believe, or around there, June 8 or 9. And on June 14, another executive order, yesterday, so another executive order was signed, which extended the state emergency to July 14. I'm currently reviewing the executive order, so just to see if that does permit virtual meetings. I guess it's going to be that tricky timeline where the meeting is tech, is going to be after that expiration. So we'll keep you updated. I'm not sure what the town is doing on that. So I would suggest that, you know, we'll plan board to be in person. If it changes, it will be addressed on the agenda with a Zoom link. So just keep, keep your eye on the, on the website. You know, this is a constant changing thing. And, you know, sometimes, you know, these things come up less than 30 days notice.
As long as the numbers keep coming down, I think we'll be back live, which I hope we are. So more will be revealed and we will find out. So anyway, thanks for coming, everybody. And a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here. Thank you.
Thank you.